Good afternoon. I have two o'clock. I think we'd like to call the public hearing to order. My name is Mark Massey. I am president and CEO of the Genesee County Economic Development Center. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out today for these three public hearings on the proposed benefits for these projects. The purpose of these public hearings is to solicit comments and feedback about the proposed incentives being requested by each project. These projects are, some of them are seeking a payment in lieu of taxes, property tax abatement, a sales tax abatement, and a mortgage tax exemption. To be clear, these incentives are not cash that is given to the company. Instead, they are an abatement on future taxes that would be owed resulting from the development of the project. Copies of the applications for financial assistance and economic impact analysis for each project are available on the GCDC's website. The GCDC's uniform tax exemption policy is also available on the GCDC's website. These public hearings are being broadcast live at the link provided in the public notice for the public hearings. Please sign in on the sign-in sheets if you have not already done so. If you wish to speak, please place an X by your name. Please note that these public hearings are not a question-and-answer period. Any comments received, either written or oral, will be compiled and given to the board prior to the board meeting where a final vote on the incentive, on the proposed incentives will take place. We will start each of the public hearings with a short overview of the proposed projects. When that has been completed, we will present the proposed incentives requested by each of the companies. At the end of the presentation, any written comments that were received will be entered into the official record. We will then call the people who put an X by their name up to the podium in the order that they signed in, which I don't know if it's the order that they've signed in, I have a bunch of sheets, but everybody who placed an X by their name will be given a chance to speak. Before providing any comments, we ask that each speaker clearly state their name and their address so we can make sure we can accurately reflect it in the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes to provide their comments. You will be given notice when you have 30 seconds left to go to your comment period, and Matt Fitzgerald will be giving the 30-second notice. If there's time at the end after everyone has spoken, if somebody else wishes to speak who did not sign up, they will be given an opportunity to do so. So the first project is Project Rampart LLC. They are looking at a total capital investment of about $3.3 billion. They would be pledging to create 105 jobs. They would be constructing a 750,000-square-foot data center, and they are estimated to generate a total of $206 million in local municipal revenue over 20 years. Now we will move into the public comment period. Again, before making comments, we just ask that each speaker clearly state their name, spell their last name, state of their municipality of residence clearly so we can get it correctly in the record. If you plan on making the same comments for all three projects, please just state that at one of the hearings, you do not need to come back up at the later hearings. Please also note that the three projects are mutually exclusive as they seek to acquire overlapping property at, on the stamp site. Accordingly, the GCDC board is only considering whether to approve one or none of the projects. Again, each speaker will have three minutes to make their comments. There will be a warning when you have 30 seconds left, and if there's time at the end of the hearing and anyone who did not intend to speak wishes to make a comment, will be given an opportunity at that time. So that being said, and I do apologize if I mispronounce any names, the first person on my sheet I have here is Madeline Nyblade.
Madeline Nyblade, N-Y-B-L-A-D-E. I live in Syracuse, New York, 22, 1222 Lancaster Avenue. I am an assistant professor at SUNY ESF. I hold a PhD in Earth and Environmental Sciences with a special, specialty in hydrology. I'm here today speaking on behalf of myself and not SUNY ESF to lend my expertise to this question about data centers. My comment applies to all three of the data centers. I have reviewed all of the environmental impact assessments and the maps that were provided and looked at the regional hydrology, local hydrology, the soils, and the subsurface geology. And I want to emphasize that all of these data centers will impact the hydrology of this region. It is upstream from the Tonawanda Seneca Nation lands, the Tonawanda Wildlife Management Area, and the Iroquois National Wildlife Refuge. The runoff from this site and the impacts of the hydrology will have detrimental downstream impacts on all three of these important lands. It will have impacts to the Tonawanda Seneca Nation, which has sovereign lands. This water will have direct impacts on their, their habitat ecosystems and waterways. So first, the data center is in direct hydrologic connection to these downstream wetlands. The whole geology of this area, it once was a historic glacial lake, and so there's lots of deposits of clay and silt. Clay is impermeable to water, and so it holds a lot of water at the surface, creating a lot of wetlands, so you see these massive wetland complexes in the region. And this likely extended onto the stamp lands as well. They have been drained and converted to agricultural lands, but you can still see the remnants of the, the streams and the wetlands on the proposed data center land, especially if you look at the 2024 Google Earth satellite imagery. You can see the stream courses and the wetlands that were on this data center lands, and I have maps and stuff to submit as part of my comments. So you can see that this land is wetland, part of this larger wetland complex, yet none of the proposals take into account the wetlands that will be destroyed as, when creating this data center, which will add, I think it's for the range 25 to 39 acres of impervious surfaces to this, this area. Also, the geologic reports done by stamp and reviewed, at least in one of the data center reports, talk extensively about perched water tables. So perched water tables are, are water tables that are on top of and higher and closer to the surface because of clay lenses, and so it's a very wet area, and it'll be hard to develop. And none of the reports take into account how they will develop, given all of these, these higher water tables in, in certain areas, and especially during wet seasons. The geologic report says that it will be very difficult to develop in the wet seasons, which will compound all of the impacts that could, that will flow downstream. Is that my timer? Okay. So I just want to say I oppose all three of the data centers.
Do you have anything you want to?
Yeah. I was caught up. Go ahead.
Next, we have Margaret Wooster.
This letter that I'm going to read is from the allies of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation, the Western New York Environmental Alliance, and 57, pardon?
You have to state your name.
Oh, Margaret Wooster, W-O-O-S-T-E-R.
And your municipality where you reside.
Buffalo, New York. So this letter is from the allies of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation, the Western New York Environmental Alliance, and 57 other environmental faith, human rights, and govern, good governance groups. And it addresses the investment groups behind Project Rampart. Specific financial, specifically financial incentives proposed by the GEC, the GECDC were not publicly shared until mid-afternoon last Friday, January 31, the same deadline set for submitting written comments. So there is more to be said about the subsidies. This is addressed to the development consortiums behind Project Rampart. Dear Mr. Wesco and Hilton Smith, we write as concerned allies of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation and residents of Western New York who deeply value our region's ecological and cultural heritage. PRP's proposal to build a data center codenamed Project Rampart at the science, at the stamp in Alabama, Alabama, New York, is not aligned with either New York State or international commitments to environmental sustainability, social responsibility, and long-term stewardship. We urge you to withdraw your application to cite a data center at stamp and join us in safeguarding this remarkable place for future generations. UN Sustainable Development Goals include clean water, affordable clean energy, responsible consumption, and climate action. Yet the proposed Project Rampart data center actually undermines these goals. The stamp site lies at the heart of a vast wetlands complex connected to the Tonawanda Wildlife Management Area, Iroquois National Wildlife Refuge, and Tonawanda Seneca Nation Reservation Territory. In fact, the entirety of stamp lies within the unceded homelands of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation. These pro, these protected lands provide critical ecological benefits like carbon sequestration, flood mitigation, habitat preservation. Industrial runoff, hydrological disruptions, and heated water discharge from a data center would devastate these fragile ecosystems. Data centers are known for their massive energy demands, and Project Rampart is no exception. It demands, its demand for 200 megawatts of electricity per year would strain the regional energy systems, undermine affordability and sustainability. Project Rampart's usage of up to 800,000 gallons of water per day squanders our precious regional fresh water.
30 seconds.
And the project's emissions of 1,471,000 tons of carbon dioxide, 441 tons of nitrogen dioxide, and 88 tons of hazardous air pollutants per year are completely out of line with 2019 Climate Leadership and Community Protection Goals and the New York State Environmental Justice Siting Law, and move our state in the direction of further environmental injustice. Putting a data center at stamp also contradicts, almost there, the New York State and National 30 by 30 Initiatives and the Western New York Wildlife Conservation Strategy. I have a copy or two of this letter with all the names of the signatories to this letter. It's a very impressive list, and thank you very much.
Do we have a copy or text?
I will give you this copy.
Joseph O'Malley.
Hello, my name is Joseph O'Malley. My municipality is Buffalo, New York, but for this part of the hearing, I will be reading from a statement by John Whitney of the Western New York Environmental Alliance. On behalf of the Western New York Environmental Alliance and in solidarity with the allies of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation and other groups and individuals, I am writing to express our strong opposition to the proposed financial incentives being offered and to support the construction, offered to support this construction and operation of the Potentia, Rampart, and Double Read computer data centers in the GCEDC stamp site in Genesee County, New York, or to any other data centers of cryptocurrency quote-unquote mines associated, and associated infrastructure for that matter. This proposal raises significant environmental and financial concerns. Among our objections is the fact that the amount of the incentives has not been disclosed and that these public fund incentives would be on top of the massive incentives that have already been directed toward the acquisition and development of this most inappropriately located set of speculative, high-tech, high-invent, environmental impact facilities. The environmental impacts of the stamp development and these new proposals cannot be overstated. The GCEDC stamp site is situated in an area with deep cultural and ecological significance, central to Western New York's heritage, including that of the Haudenosaunee people and the Tonawanda Seneca Nation. The region is part of the ancestral and contemporary territory of the Haudenosaunee, Iroquois, and is physically, biologically, hydrologically, and geomorphologically interconnected with a system of national and state wildlife refuges totaling over 20,000 acres. These refuges are crucial to the Eastern Wildway, an ecological corridor extending from Mexico to Maine, which aims to restore and preserve wildlife habitats across the vast landscape. Including introducing large-scale data centers threatens to disrupt these delicate ecosystems, leading to habitat destruction, increased pollution, and a substantial carbon footprint in direct conflict with New York's CLCPA and 30 by 30 goals. Moreover, the financial implications of offering incentives for such projects warrant scrutiny. While proponents may argue that data centers bring economic growth, which isn't necessarily true, they often do so at hidden costs. Data centers require enormous amounts of energy, energy not available at this location, but what, which must be brought to the site through transmission lines that are almost certainly inadequate, putting additional strain on local and regional infrastructure. The long-term financial burden of maintaining these facilities, coupled with the potential environmental remediation costs, could outweigh the short-term benefit of the economic incentives. Public funds should not be used to incentivize these uncertain benefits and not without first conducting an independent economic analysis of the costs and benefits. Additionally, the influx of these centers might not significantly boost local employment as data centers typically offer limited job opportunities compared to other industries. It's also not at all clear that the rapid advances in technology will not make these massive energy and cooling water demanding structures obsolete within a short period of time. We are already hearing about those innovations. These massive facilities could be obsolete in a matter of a few years. In light of these concerns, we urge you to abandon any of the financial incentives being proposed for the construction and operation of data centers in the GCEDC stamp site. The preservation of our cultural and natural heritage, combined with prudent financial planning, should take precedence over short-sighted development projects that pose long-term risks and harmful and/or wasteful impacts. Finally, we believe a new set of public hearings must be held to address the many changes in stamp since it was first proposed and approved. We trust that you will consider these concerns and act in the best interest of our community and environment. Sincerely, John Whitney, Chairperson of the Western New York Environmental Alliance.
Thank you. Kirk Skirdow.
Hi, my name is Kirk Skirdow, and I'm a settler ally who is the family physician of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation. I'm also a public health specialist, and for public health reasons, among many others, I strongly oppose the proposed setups for Project Potentia, Project Rampart, and Project Double Read. These three projects all have the nerve to propose setting up immediately at the border of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation and its big woods. All three projects estimate they burn at least 60,000 gallons of diesel fuel per year. They all expect to emit at least 500 tons of climate-warming carbon dioxide per year. Because the nation would be closest to pollution sources, it would be illegal for GCEDC to approve any of these projects per the Environmental Justice Siting Law and New York's climate law, the CLCPA. In addition to air pollution, the nation's health would suffer from the constant jet engine-like 50 to 90 decibel noise coming from any of these three projects. There's extensive documentation that people living near data centers have much higher rates of stress, anxiety, insomnia, headaches, cognitive impairment, hearing loss, and ringing in the ears as a result. Just talk to people in North Tonawanda. Over time, this noise exposure even causes high blood pressure and heart disease, per the World Health Organization. Noise, air, and light pollution would also drive wildlife away from the adjacent big woods, yet this is the nation's main site for hunting, and these projects would therefore threaten its food security. Further, potentially contaminated surface water flows at stamp from east to west and therefore into the nation. Just imagine the contamination of their well water with diesel fuel spills and those from untreated sewer water. What about the threat of a data center fire burning down their big woods and their houses? These risks and harms also apply to stamp's other neighbors outside of the nation. Meanwhile, others would be affected as far away as the mouth of Orchard River. Just think about fishermen sitting idle with empty poles because of the harmful effects of superheated data center sewer water, spiced up with industrial toxins. In medicine, we study how parasites suck up the nutrients or resources while harming them. Well, that's exactly what these data centers are. Parasitic centers that would suck up an immense amount of the drinking water of Niagara, Orleans, Erie, and Genesee County residents. They would also steal a huge amount of their energy in exchange for a barrage of contamination. What's more, hardly any jobs would be offered to local residents, and the expansion of AI is predicted to result in massive job loss for blue-collar workers. This would mean millions of dollars in taxpayer subsidies, funding one to three parasitic centers that would actually harm taxpayers and take away their jobs. GCEDC must reject the applications of all three centers, but they won't because they just don't care about their communities. Therefore, it's time to force their hand in doing so. Just as North Tonawanda banned new parasitic centers, all other communities locally would be wise to do the same.
I am on the executive committee of the Niagara Group for the Sierra Club, and today, and I live in Buffalo, New York. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of the roughly 37,000 members of the Atlantic chapter of the Sierra Club. And to oppose any funding for any data centers, either the Potentia Holdings, or the Hydroscale, which is the Hydroscale, or the Rampart, or the Double Read, there should be no data center here at stamp. We oppose the data centers on both procedural and, and on substantive grounds. Data centers around the country are notoriously dirty and noisy, consumers of vast amount of electricity, which are straining electric grids, emitting large volumes of greenhouse gas pollution, and undermining our country's ability to transition away from fossil fuels. Our landmark 2019 Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act has specific goals for the reduction of carbon emissions, and this project would undermine those goals. The law requires that all agencies in New York State consider what effect their projects will have on our ability to meet our goals. This undermines the goals. Project Potentia would require 195 megawatts of electricity per year from NiPA. This is enough to power about 32,000 homes. And on the other hand, it would use an estimated 1,285,000 gallons of diesel fuel per year. That would put about 14,622 tons of carbon dioxide into the air, as well as other pollutants. The largest facility that's proposed is the Project Double Read. That would require 250 megawatts of electricity, diverting 40, enough to power 40,000 homes. All of this is in nonconformity with our CLCPA. Based upon other, the experience of other communities around the country, the, including Niagara Falls and North Tonawanda, which enacted a moratorium on crypto-mining currency because of the, it affected the health and well-being of its citizens, there was a moratorium. This would have caused noise pollution that would also disrupt the lives of the people who are living here and, okay. Finally, the manner in which this hearing was organized and the papers that have been filed publicly by the GCEDC are not in conformity with the general municipal law. First of all, this agency doesn't have the authority or the powers to entertain a data center. It doesn't fall within the requirements or the authorities of Section 852 or 858. It's, the manner in which it was noticed did not meet with the law, not sufficient, the public was not given sufficient notice, it wasn't published properly, it doesn't contain the information about the money that is being offered, the incentives that are being offered. Late on Friday, apparently additional papers were filed. Those are also not in conformity with the general municipal law. And, and the assessment or the analysis that appears to have been filed on Friday is not in conformity with the requirement to assess the costs and benefits. So in general, we object to all three data centers. They're in, not in compliance with the CLCPA, with the general municipal law, or with the citing law to protect disadvantaged communities, which is both in the CLCPA and, and a standalone law. Thank you.
You always get a fellow residents of Genesee County and my neighbors in Alabama. It's good to see you all here today. And I stress for today, everyone so far has stood up and spoken about the risks associated with these data centers. I myself live behind the big woods. The big woods is my closest neighbor. I have a cousin who is six years old, and in 20 years, I'm not going to be here, but she's going to be here. What are the risks to her? Her brothers, her sisters? What about your children, your grandchildren? My ancestors reside on the Tonawanda Seneca Nation. That land there is all, all we have left. And the perks that are being offered to, in exchange for these data centers, is it really worth it? When you think about the dangers that are posed to our health, when we start failing, where are these people who operate these data centers? Where are they going to be? Are they going to really give a damn about you or I? My neighborhood is threatened. How about yours? Thank you.
My name is Barbara Jonathan. I reside on Tonawanda Seneca Nation.
Thank you. Sarah Howard.
I live in Syracuse, New York. You don't need my street address. I live in Syracuse on the unceded homelands of the Anadaga Nation, and I have the honor of working for the Tonawanda Seneca Nation, on whose own unceded homelands, the entirety of the WNY stamp mega-industrial site, including the parcel being considered as a site for Projects Rampart, Potentia, or Double Read is located. I am here to comment on the requested financial incentives of $218,960,000 in sales tax exemptions and $19,950,000 in mortgage tax exemptions to Project Rampart, a proposed data center being advanced by the real estate investment firm, PRPREI. I vehemently oppose those incentives as I oppose all three of the financial incentive packages, and let's call them what they are, which is taxpayer monies requested by these data center developers. However, because GCEDC did not post the relevant documents on their website until midday Friday, January 31st, which is one business day before these sham public hearings, and at the same time as GCEDC's deadline for the submission of written online comments, I am not going to comment in substance on the detail of these incentives. Instead of commenting on the incentives, I'm going to highlight some aspects of Project Rampart's environmental assessment form, that's an EAF, that render whatever company is actually behind this application, and that's right, GCEDC has repeatedly refused to disclose the identities of the companies that would actually be running these data centers. They could be Google, or Meta, or a Bitcoin mining operation, that render these particularly unfit recipients of the $238,910,000 in taxpayer dollars that they have the gall to request. Before I do that, though, I want to take a few seconds to remind everyone that the reason we're here is that GCEDC was forced to hold public hearings pursuant to Article 859A of the general municipal law, which at its most basic level requires an assessment of the public benefits of any development project that is requesting taxpayer subsidies. Let me repeat, we're here to assess the public benefits of Rampart, Potentia, and Double Read in relation to the hundreds of millions that each one is requesting. So as I stated, the backers of Project Rampart are PRPREI, a global real estate investment firm. The primary contact for PRPREI is Tom Wesco, a name that may be familiar to those of you who read the local newspapers. In fall 2023, Tom taped his company's meetings with GCEDC and then sent the tapes to local media, along with accusations that GCEDC was unfavorably favoring Project Hydroscale, now called Potentia. For the record, I actually appreciated this move. For the record, I actually appreciated this move. Tom's ethically questionable and aggressive tactics brought a lot of important information to light. And like Tom, I also feel that GCEDC has utterly failed to carry out a fair and transparent process with respect to the data center applicants or any other aspect of Stamp. However, this is where Tom and I part ways, because I absolutely do not believe that the development of Project Rampart would produce any iota of public benefit, and thus is unworthy of one cent of public money. Project Rampart would feature a 40-foot-high, single-story structure totaling 750,000 square feet. For scale, we are talking about a building that would be roughly the equivalent to 13 football fields, a massive building, especially in the middle of what is currently a rural agricultural community. This building would only produce 105 jobs, meaning that Rampart's requested incentives translate to $2,275,333 per job. Rampart would require 200 megawatts of electricity per year, which we've already heard is roughly enough to power about 32,000 homes. So I have a lot of critiques of those numbers, but at least they are fairly straightforward, no funny business. I'm going to keep talking. Now we get into the numbers that raise many, many questions, which Mark has already informed us he does not plan to answer, because this is a time for public comment, not question and answer. But we can still pose the questions publicly, even if Mark and representatives of each data center developer choose not to answer them in this public forum. That silence is in and of itself an answer to the question of whether or not these entities deserve our trust, which is no. As you know, Mark, each applicant submitted two EAFs, an initial version and a revision. The revised EAFs and associated materials differ in significant ways from the original EAFs and contain numerous internal contradictions, as well as certain claims that appear baseless. Here are a few of the most disturbing differences in Rampart's documents. The original application for Project Rampart, submitted on October 15, 2024--
Again, we're happy to leave the record open for written comments to go further--
I'm going to keep speaking. Three minutes is an appropriate amount of time in which to brush your teeth, not comment on projects that are asking for hundreds of millions of dollars in public subsidies. I'm going to keep speaking. The original application for Project Rampart, submitted on October 15, 2024, indicated a need for 800,000 gallons of water per day. That's a lot of water, 292 million gallons per year, to be precise, or roughly 442 Olympic swimming pools' worth. And would they be doing something useful with that water? Something of benefit to the public? No. They would be using that water to cool superheated computing equipment. In case you don't know, a little problem with data centers is that their equipment gets very, very hot. Most data centers depend on vast quantities of water to heat down their equipment and prevent short-circuiting, electrical fires, or explosions. So no, the 292 million gallons wouldn't be used in service of benefits to the public. Rather, it would be used for Bitcoin mining, or generative AI, or something equally useless and wasteful of our precious fresh water. Apparently, someone told PRP REI that using all that water wasn't a great look, because the revised EAF submitted on December 31, 2024 states that the project needs no water whatsoever for cooling and just 3,675 gallons for sanitary sewer. The new application references something called a closed-loop system, which conveniently eliminates the need for hundreds of millions of gallons of water to cool Rampart's equipment. However, the new application also now includes a nearly eight-acre retention pond that would hold 10 million gallons of water. That's an awful lot of stormwater. Together, the size of the retention ponds, references to the closed-loop system, and the general lack of information about heated water discharge, a well-known environmental impact of many data centers, suggests that Rampart's impoundment ponds may be intended to serve more of a cooling function than a stormwater retention function. This usage seems particularly likely, given that Rampart's revised EAF does acknowledge the intent to use adjacent wetlands and waterlands for the express purpose of dealing with stormwater runoff, runoff which will carry salts, traces of vehicular fluid, and other contaminants directly onto the Tonawanda Seneca Nation Reservation territory, with potentially serious impacts on nation waterways. And that's not even addressing the harms of thermal pollution.
Excuse me, just for one second. We appreciate your comments. There's a lot of people who want to speak here today. We're more than happy to take your letter in to make it public record. And in light of the comments, we will extend the written comment period to 5:00 on Thursday, if people wish to submit more comments. At this point in time, I would really like it if you wouldn't mind handing us your letter. We'll put it into the record, and we move on to the next person to speak.
I'm going to hold on to it and keep on reading in the next hour. Thank you.
I'm having a hard time reading this name, so again, I apologize. Is it Maggie Carr?
Okay. I just have this written comment that I'd like to pass on.
Just state your name, please.
Maggie Cowan.
And where you live?
Buffalo.
Buffalo.
Thank you. This is from a friend of mine, George S. Soffman. I'm writing to comment about the proposed financial incentives being offered by GCEDC to Projects Potencia, Rampart, and Double Reed. The Stamp location is an area close to the state's largest federal wildlife refuge in the Tonawanda Seneca Nation. Any disruptive industry here will have a negative impact on both. Additionally, any waste from a data center going into Orleans County will impact the river systems that ultimately empty into Lake Ontario. Orleans County has seen a growing tourism industry based on fishing in the river system and in the lake. The potential negative impact of a data center would not be limited to the immediate area. Hearings that specifically address the impact of the data center on the area should be scheduled as an immediate follow-up to the hearings of February 3rd. The people of nearby Somerset, Niagara County, have experience with data centers located on the grounds of a former coal-fired power plant. The data center is expanding while discounting rather than fully addressing the residents' issues and noise. Here's a quote from the Lockport Sun Journal, December 22, 2024. Cooling in buildings 1 and 2 is by fans, and unmuted, they generate roughly 85 decibels. Just as an aside, OSHA's level for safe workplace exposure is 80 decibels. Buildings 3 and 4 are cooled with static venting, which is said to be less noisy. Even so, homeowners 1 to 2 miles away claim they can hear Lake Mariner at work, and they objected strongly to its expansion. Terroir Wolf's John Maribella said in October that the company had several noise studies on the property. The result showed the noise level is below the 50 decibels listed as the town's noise ordinance. The potential negative impacts for residents and wildlife made it clear that no data center should be encouraged to locate the Stamp campus. I've got a little bit more time. So I'd just like to say, this is one of the few natural areas, like, remaining in this region of the state, and it seems ridiculous to throw it away for one, you know? I mean, if you look at the proposal, right? Like, not what's actually going to result from these, but like, the actual, like, the best-case scenario, right? What the company is trying to sell is going to happen. There's no value there, right? Like, I don't, like, what? It's just so obviously, like, provides nothing to the community, and we're supposed to be commenting on conflicts of interest. I don't know how you accept this, if you don't have a conflict of interest. I--
You got me all emotional. I might not be able to do this. It's okay. That's a very emotional topic. My name is Evelyn Wackett, W-A-C-K-E-T-T. I live in the Black Rock section of Buffalo, New York, along the Niagara River, Skijakula Creek. And I'm here in opposition to all three of the data centers. I submitted an op-ed into the Buffalo News saying why we don't want data centers here. And the main reason why I'm here, and what got me started over two years ago, was the short-eared owl. I'm a wildlife rehabber. This guy right here is what got me involved with this Stamp project. I love owls, I love raptors, and everything about the Stamp project threatens the endangered short-eared owl, the threatened northern harrier hawk, the threatened monarch butterfly, the threatened and endangered bog turtles. This affects everything we see and we don't see. Yesterday was World Wetlands Day, and we're here having a party. I want to celebrate the wetlands. I don't want to see them destroyed. Everything about this goes against the Treaty of Canandaigua, the New York Culpa laws, the Endangered Species Act, the Clean Water Act, environmental justice citing. There's more, I'm sure, that there's being violated here. And again, the seen and the unseen. You know, you think about the little creatures in the water that the birds feed on. All of this water connects us all over the place. This affects all of Western New York. The proposed pipeline 16 miles from Niagara County into Genesee County to draw over 6 million gallons of water a day from the Niagara River, don't Canada have a say in this? Then we're going to take it, we're going to heat it up, add chemicals, and then we're going to dump it into, well, the last plan was Oakfield, New York, which goes into Oak Orchard Creek, which runs through the refuge, which ends up in Lake Ontario. This thing affects all of us here, and we're all connected. One thing fails, we all fail. The bees, we lose the bees, we lose the flowers, we lose the birds. We can't eat if the bees aren't here. And to speak out for my friends of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation, like I said, I came on here because I wanted to protect the owl, because I'm a wildlife rehabber. But I've grown a relationship with the Tonawanda Seneca people. I respect them and their opposition to this. And, you know, to be invited to help protest for this with you people meant so much to me. And I'm trying not to get emotional. I've got a petition here that I started back in October. We have over 1,056 signatures in opposition to Stamp. I've got them all printed out here. And to finish this, you know, as a little girl growing up, my mom used to bring me here all the time. It's what taught me to love the land, love the water. To finish, I'm going to read one comment from the petition, but I'm going to submit them all. "The Iroquois National Wildlife Refuge is a beautiful place, and it borders the Tonawanda Wildlife Management Area. More importantly, it borders the Tonawanda-Banana Seneca Nation and threatens their well water that they use to drink. There have not been proper procedures done as far as how this Stamp project has just appeared, and to me, it just appeared. There is a lot of concrete evidence to show hydrogen can be used, green energy. Anyone who has ever seen these two huge egg-balled structures has to wonder how safe it is. Yes, the wetlands are vital to the local ecosystem and threatens one of the Great Lakes, Lake Ontario. This area is such an area of bird and waterfowl migration, and bald eagles live there." And let's speak about the bald eagles, our national bird. We're going to ruin their habitat for this, and like everybody else said before me, it's one of the last little untouched areas we have here in New York State, and part of the 30x30, and part of the Wild Way, and the Green Way, and all these things that we're trying to save. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kristin Mosher, M-O-S-H-E-R. I live in Syracuse, New York, on the unceded homelands of the Anadaga Nation. I'm a professional wildlife photographer and sound recorder. I'm here speaking on behalf of myself, as well as many of you have been up here to speak on behalf of the wildlife, and I completely disagree with these data centers, because they're set up to destroy what wildlife has left. These projects do not belong in an area neighboring the peoples of the Seneca Nation, in addition to the wetland wildlife refuges of John White Wildlife Management Area, Iroquois National Wildlife Management Area, Tonawanda Wildlife Management Area, Oak Orchard Wildlife Management Area. What are you thinking? What is going to be left if you do this? I am a volunteer working with a team of volunteers to record biological diversity on the Seneca Nation as part of this project. We have set out microphones to record the wildlife on the nation, which I feel so privileged to have been involved with. I'd like to share sampling of these recordings to wake you up to what will be lost. This first recording was made on May 1, 2024, as an example of the enormous diversity of birds which utilize the big woods, which is home to over 100 species of birds, many of which are dependent on undisturbed areas to reproduce. Here it goes. I hope you can hear it. The second recording, captured in this same forest, is the sound of just one truck passing by on a nearby road to go to the Stamp complex. That's what you'll be hearing if these three data centers go in, if any of this continued destruction continues to happen. The data center would be one of the closest complexes to this exceptional forest. The sound of the trucks will be multiplied by the constant industrial sounds of this center. Noise pollution will not only impact and displace wildlife in the big woods, it will forever destroy the peace and serenity of this sacred land for the people of Tonawanda. It should also be mentioned that this is a stronghold for the cerulean warbler, one of our national species that is of conservation concern and is also endangered in Canada. I want to play one more recording for you. I know I'm over time, but this is the sound that they hear in Virginia, where there already is a data center built and continuing to do its thing. It's a low-frequency noise that is always heard in this neighborhood now. That's what we're in for. If this isn't stopped, then thank you for your time.
Hello, everyone. My name is Gary Sirzak, C-I-U-R-C-Z-A-K, in Buffalo, unceded land of the Seneca Nation. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today, pursuant to General Municipal Law 859a. I am speaking out to oppose the proposed financial incentives and the development of Project Potencia, Project Rampart, and Project Double Reed, and demand that GCEDC hold a new set of public hearings. I'm a birdwatcher, who's also a member of the Buffalo Ornithological Society, though I am speaking for myself here today. I enjoy multiple trips to the Iroquois National Wildlife Refuge each year, a wildlife refuge adjacent to Stamp land. Any of these projects will take and use the habitat of the endangered short-eared owl and the threatened northern harrier. The proposal to build a gigantic data center adjacent to a protected wildlife area is shocking to me, a person who has spent considerable time in this area. New York and the United States spends untold dollars to restore previously damaged wetlands, streams, rivers, and wild areas that have been degraded by prior misuse and abuse, and a pristine wetland area that shelters endangered birds and other wildlife-- and other wildlife is under threat of destruction by the GCEDC. Rather than removing wild corridors and sanctuaries, we should support their expansion. No mitigation plan can ameliorate this destruction. I'd like to leave you with the idea about the size of any of these projects. Many here know the BJ's Club, Wholesale Club in Batavia. That one building, which I think we all agree is huge, is about 68,000 square feet, according to the papers filed by their agent, the DLC Management Corporation of Tarrytown. Each, any one of these data centers are about 800,000 to 900,000 square feet. Any one of those data centers could hold almost 12 of these BJ's. It would be then filled with computers emitting tremendous disruptive noise, as we just heard, that will not only be heard by every single person living within several miles, but also all local domestic and wildlife in this area. This would be a loud, disturbing, and unrelenting noise that continues for 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Please join me in opposing these projects.
Katie Rivers?
My name is Katie Rivers. I live, that's why my heart's just beating so fast. I live at 6548 Crosby Road, right down the corner of the Stamp Project. We lived there for 30 years, and we've seen it change so much. I have opposed this stamp project from day one, and I will continue to oppose it. I, just from what they've done so far, the smells from the trucks going by and everything, that's disruptive. The deer, if anybody goes down Crosby Road at night, you can see they're in their projects because they don't. They're used to where they used to be. And it just breaks my heart that things are changing from the original plan from stamp. And I feel like they're trying to save the big project. So we'll divert to doing the data centers, which are not harmful, they're not helpful to anybody. They're very hurtful. And my family would be directly impacted, along with our whole, I don't even know where our people are from our town, while they're working to fund the taxpayer money for the projects. That's what it is. So they, I wish they were here, but it just breaks my heart. What was that?
That's why they have it on the afternoon.
Right. Well, it just breaks my heart that so, that people don't realize how beneficial nature is to us. And I just, it just breaks my heart. I wish people would wake up to see what's actually going on. And I'm so disheartened by the town that even took on the economic development coming into the town. It's like you've all been bamboozled. It's like I can't even imagine that you would think that this would be beneficial to anybody in the town. I have seen zero benefit. I don't know if anybody else has seen any benefit in the town. But it's just very harmful to everyone, the citizens and the wildlife. And we all know the history of them trying to put the pipeline down through, you know, going down in Imidana. I mean, and they, and they have a history of covering things up when they make a mistake. So to me, that tells me that you cannot be trusted. And so, trust is earned. It's not just given freely. So that's all I wanted to say. I don't look forward, well, I will not because I know this will not go through. Listen to constant ringing 24/7, 365. As it is, I can look at my backyard and see the big white balls that are just sitting there. And I've witnessed all of it. And that's all. I just hope that they will just not even, I oppose it, and everybody in the whole county should. So that's it. Thank you.
Christine Zinni?
Hello. My name is Christine Zinni, Z-I-N-N-I. I live in Batavia, New York. Third-generation descendant of an Italian immigrant and Polish immigrant family. And I have great concerns about this stamp project, and I oppose it. I oppose the Project Rampart, Potencia, Project Potencia, and Project Double Read for the following reasons. My father was a lawyer. He was a police attorney for the city of Batavia, as were other members of my family lawyers. And this seems to be a question of informed consent over the years. We've heard one side, basically, of the story for the last couple years, but we need, the public needs to hear the other side. I urge you to Google data centers. See what comes up, the number of lawsuits across the nation because of noise pollution, because of the ill effects. How does this, how is that going to affect workers? Promise of 100 jobs. How about the lawsuits of workers who have had to endure noise pollution within the centers they're working in? This needs to be considered with that promise of jobs, for one thing. And I'll just read parts of my letter here. And the central focus is that noise pollution, I think we all heard and felt from the sound of the birds, the migratory birds of the area, in the area, from one of the speakers, what this means. So I'm here on behalf, I'm an educator, and I'm here as an ally of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation, as a resident. And also, I'm here to speak for nature's rights for the birds and animals in the area that are trying to send a message to us that have been, the character of this region is at stake. Who decides what the character of the region will be? People living here next to the wildlife refuge?
30 seconds.
Okay. I'm not going to be able to read everything, but I'll just say, I'm entering my article, my paper in the record. And none of the three data center applicants has conducted a comprehensive, meaningful noise study. Instead, they downplay or obscure altogether potential noise impacts. Again, go to your computer, check and see the kind of lawsuits that have been levied, you know, that have been stated against data centers. And that's what the county faces in the future because of the noise. How many of the people who are promoting the data centers live here would hear that noise?
Angela Carlson? And I know the second meeting's supposed to start at 3 o'clock. I think we've got nine or 10 speakers, so we'll finish this up before we start the next one.
All right. Hello, everyone. As stated, my name is Angela Carlson, C-A-R-L-S-O-N. I live in Batavia, but I'm a longtime resident of Oakfield. My family still lives in Oakfield, and I'm a local teacher at the Oakfield Alabama School. So I speak for a lot of people in the area who, of course, cannot be here right now. So, Mark Macy. Pursuant to general municipal law 859A, I am ready to oppose proposed financial incentives for Project Rampart, Potencia, and Double Read. The applicable Genesee Municipal Law requires GCEDC to produce a written cost-benefit analysis by the agency that identifies the extent to which project will create or retain permanent private sector jobs, the estimated value of any tax exemptions to be provided, the amount of private sector investment generated or likely to be generated by the proposed project, the contribution of the project to the state's renewable energy goals, and emission reduction targets as set forth in the state energy plan adopted pursuant to Section 6104 of the Energy Law, the likelihood of accomplishing the proposed project in a timely fashion, and the extent to which the proposed project will provide additional sources of revenue for municipalities, school districts, and any other public benefits that might occur as a result of the project. In addition, the law requires the GCEDC to identify the owner or operator of the facility to the public. GCEDC has failed to produce such a cost-benefit analysis at a good time or inform the public of the data center's identity, and thus, these hearings are insufficient as a venue in which to solicit public comment. Moreover, Project Rampart's use of 200 megawatts of electricity per year and its onsite bulk storage of 1.5 million gallons of diesel fuel with associated risks of brown and surface water contamination raise serious concerns. Additionally, Project Rampart's claims of no impact on wetlands and water bodies are undermined by its plans to discharge stormwater directly to tributaries and wetlands facilitated by a 7.7-acre onsite stormwater pond. The creation of 28 acres of impervious surface further exacerbates potential environmental consequences. The EAF also acknowledges the presence of New York State-listed rare and threatened species, including the northern harrier and short-eared owl, making this project an even greater ecological risk. Additionally, I am ready to issue the following demands. The GCEDC was properly produced and informed about the written cost-benefit analysis of Project Rampart stipulated in the general municipal law, must widely circulate this report, and must hold another round of public hearings with significant advance notice to the public in a time that accommodates the people who are working a standard 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM schedule. The GCEDC must immediately disclose the identity of the owners and operators of Project Rampart and the other data centers. The GCEDC must publicly provide the completed applications required by GMU 859A4 and the uniform criteria for evaluation and selection of projects required by GMU 859A5. The GCEDC must ensure that JLL LSE carry out third-party-verified, robust, comprehensive noise study of Project Rampart and while they publicize the results. In all aspects of the public process pertinent to Project Rampart and the other data centers, GCEDC must follow CP29 on environmental justice and provide enhanced public participation opportunities to the Tonawanda Seneca Nation and the public at large. To quote a certain op-ed, "One cannot claim to care about the environment while continuing to disregard and disrespect the rights of indigenous peoples. They are on the front lines combating the disastrous industrialization destruction that directly fuel the climate crisis we face today. Ignoring their warnings is a grave mistake. They have been fighting to protect this land far longer than any of us." So fellow people of Alabama, don't mess this up. Businessmen, maybe sellouts. We are not. Land back.
Melissa Smith?
Melissa? Yeah, I have to keep it level.
Keep it level.
Your point read of the speaker.
Okay. Level with what? Keep it level, okay. Okay, my name is Melissa Smith. I think you guys all know that that's my name. I'm from the Tonawanda Seneca Nation. I live right here on Judge Road, right across from the, where the stamp is trying to build all their crap. First of all, I want to say that how dare you come to all of these people? And you don't even have your people that are going to build these things lined up. How dare you? How dare you present? Like you know more than these companies know to present to us what to do. You know? How dare you? No respect for all these people, no respect for the nation. It's terrible. And have you ever been out to the Iroquois National Wildlife Refuge? Do you guys ever go there? Because we go there a lot. There's places for me to go and see woods and swamp and whatever where I can get to it. You know how difficult that is for a person in a wheelchair? You need to be more closer to the earth. You are so wrong in your thinking that green means money. Because green does not. And I have a few suggestions for what you can do with that thing on Crosby Road. Turn it into a wildlife sanctuary like they did somewhere in New York State. It's called Cherry Creek. And they made it into a huge, they aligned it with the Iroquois National Wildlife Refuge. You could do everything and have tourism there instead of this crap that you're trying to put there. Get out there and roll on the grass once in a while. That's what your people need.
Jacob Clark? Jacob Clark?
Hello, everybody. My name is Jacob Clark. I am a registered member of the Tonawanda Seneca Nation. I come to you from East Shore, New York, and I'm here to read on behalf of somebody who cannot attend for reasons we've previously heard. I am going to read the letter handed to me here. I am ready to express comments about the proposed financial incentives being offered by GCEDC to Project Potencia. As a resident of Genesee County, I find it part of my civic duty to ask for clarification on the proposed stamp data centers project by Genesee County Economic Development Center, GCEDC. The data center's information seems to be intentionally vague with empty promises of jobs and quote-unquote "economic development." It's clear that the lack of transparency is just another clear tactic to dissuade the public from the real potential harm to the area. There are real concerns of sound pollution, raised utilities due to increased demand, and new infrastructure that will fall squarely on the backs of local residents. The Tonawanda Second Nation has clearly stated that they do not want this project next to their territory. It has impacts on their land in consideration to biodiversity. It is our responsibility as neighbors of the nation to stand with them[1695.04] It is our responsibility as neighbors of the nation to stand with them in protecting their land as well as our own. As residents of Genesee County, we have seen many projects come and go that have not directly benefited the residents, instead have just lined the pockets of large corporations. I oppose the proposed incentives for Project Potentia and the development of Project Potentia by G C E D C. G C E D C's February third, twenty twenty-five public hearings are flagrantly inadequate and illegal, constitute a violation of the public trust, and manifest an utter lack of regard for the impact of data centers on the Tonawanda Seneca Nation, residents of the Great Lakes Bioregion, and the health and well-being of our shared environment. G C E D C must address these failures and hold a new round of hearings. Sincerely, Gina Chilomano, Batavia, New York. I yield my time.
Kalka Salisbury.
Hi, my name is Kalka Salisbury. I'm a resident, this one? My name is Kalka Salisbury. I'm a resident of the town of Alabama. I pay my taxes here. I pay my water bills, which are going up. This is also the traditional lands of the Tonawanda Seneca. We are on it. These lands are unceded, and they were taken without being ratified by Congress. I hold a deed that has Tonawanda Seneca's land outlined on my deed, as I'm sure the deed does to the property that's on stamp. I did not, I moved to Alabama not knowing that this stamp works, was already underway. It was done in secrecy. There was an inappropriate environmental review that I saw that was done in two thousand twelve that did not include the Tonawanda Seneca Nation input at that time. They weren't even mentioned at all. They weren't counted as part of the local census. There are about nine hundred people that live over there. Their very existence is threatened by this project. Their way of life is threatened. We are all threatened. What happens to them will happen to all of us. We are currently undergoing a sixth mass extinction on this planet. Google it. What we're going to need in the future is clean water and rich soil and land in which to grow organic foods. I propose that that may be a project for stamp.
Right?
But not, not without, not without the consent of the Tonawanda Nation. I hope to turn the page. We all need to come together as a community. We have all suffered, the people that live here, emotionally, physically, due to the stress of this project. Please, let's rethink stamp, cease and desist this whole project, and let's move forward with a better plan.
James Burnett.
Hi, my name is James Burnett. I'm from Lackawanna, New York, way over in Erie County, other side of the world. It has come to my attention that one of the major reasons for the stamp project is to buy Western New York votes for Governor O'Call and Senator Chuck Schumer by dumping federal and state monies into G C E D C and their business associates. Somebody's getting paid, but you're not. The promised jobs will likely not materialize after the initial destruction and construction. This is a low economic return project. I'll give you two examples. Example one, last week Chinese A I app Deep Seek massively undercut Open A I on pricing, sending shockwaves down the NASDAQ. This is risky. Example two, comedian Nikki Glaser at the recent Tom Brady roast made fun of cryptocurrency and Tom Brady's thirty million dollar loss with Bitcoin, and then attributed a quote to local boy and Brady's go-to tight end, the likable troglodyte Rob Gronkowski. Me know that not real money. Even Gronk knows better. Nikki Glaser said that, that's not my joke. The real money comes from careful choice of industries and careful site selection with the help of organizations like NYSERDA, which will help find appropriate brownfields for industrial parks. This was not done. NYSERDA was not consulted. There are better ways to put your people to work. You have to consult with other organizations that know where to locate things. The real beauty, the draw on this area, the star of the show is the Iroquois National Wildlife Refuge. I invite you to check out this book, Where to Watch Wildlife: New York Wildlife Viewing Guide, available at your public library. There's a section in this book on the Iroquois National Wildlife Reserve, or Refuge, listing river otters among other wildlife. I hope to come here more often and spend tourist dollars and photograph the river otters. Okay, thirty seconds. Finally, to the good people of Genesee County and town of Alabama, don't let stamp rip you off and thank you by polluting your air and water. Okay? Thank you.
Betty Pitcher.
Hello, everyone. My name is Betty Pitcher. It's like a baseball pitcher or the kind you pour. I live in Lancaster, New York as of last spring. For many, many years before that, I lived in East Aurora. And it was in East Aurora that I saw the article in the paper written by Jacob Clark about the stamp project. And I've read some more articles about this. So I have a little, I wrote a little bit here. The Iroquois National Wildlife Refuge and the Tonawanda Seneca Nation must be protected. The stamp project would do great harm to this area. It would be disastrous to the Tonawanda Seneca Nation and the Iroquois National Wildlife Refuge. Stamp surrounded by four state and federally protected areas and would border the Tonawanda Seneca Nation's big woods. In this area, there are wetlands, grasslands, and forests with its wildlife of birds and other animals. There is cultural and national, natural history and natural beauty. Nature does not have a voice. It is up to us to be that voice, to protect this very special place by saying no to stamp and its irreparable damage. We must be that voice to protect this natural beauty. This is what makes New York such a beautiful state. Thank you.
Amy Khan.
My name is Amy Khan. I live on unceded Seneca land in Rochester, New York. And I am an active ally to the Seneca people. I'm speaking here today, and I think I might combine my comments on both the Rampart and the Potentia project since we're past the three o'clock time. I'm writing to oppose any kind of financial incentives for either of these projects. And I've been following this project since Governor Cuomo first proposed this project. And I remember conversations at that time about it's made no sense to me to put a tech park in the middle of an area where they were expecting people to drive from Rochester and Buffalo to be employed there. Things have changed dramatically since that was first proposal. And we're now to the point where all of these hundreds of millions of my tax dollars, your tax dollars, have been poured into something that is going to employ less than a hundred people if that. So I think that some of our politicians that are still pumping money in here are being fooled as well as the public. There has been such opaqueness with this project from day one. There's been no attempts to be transparent. There have been no attempts really until very recently, and even now it's done begrudgingly, to speak to the neighbors, the folks who live in the Tonawanda Seneca Nation who rely on their big woods. People come from all over Haudenosaunee Territory to hunt and collect medicine in the big woods. And the big woods are a threat because of now data centers going in. If I read, and I'm hoping that there was a typo in the information, but one of these data centers, if I did my calculations right, it could be a forty-one acres of building that's being, I mean, that's hard to imagine how you even hold a building up that's that big. To fill that building with machinery that's going to pump out noise, that's going to then disturb all those animals, to cool that building with water
Thirty seconds.
that is then going to be discharged either into wetlands that flow into the nation or, you know, be drunk in the opposite direction and go into Oak Orchard. Both of those bodies of water are full of very sensitive animals that will not survive the pollution. So even if you, if anyone here likes to fish, that might be threatened by these. So there's a lot, this is affecting many, many people. And as a taxpayer, I especially object to this use of my hard-earned money. And I do also object to holding this on the first Monday of a month in the afternoon when so many of my friends were not able to come because they found out the story of their job. Unfortunately, they were tired, so I had the option to come here today. But many, many hardworking people whose money you're spending were not able to come. That is a violation of all of my state regulations. We've got to do this, have a better job of not just check marking and saying, oh, we're following the law, but actually following the law. It will serve your purposes better as well.
Thank you.
This one, it's a Potentia, the top that you just laid up.
All three, okay. Thank you. Jordan Kadish.
Hi, my name is Jordan Kadish, K A D I S H. I have about thirty percent Alteplano Coon Deep Boyasensei blood in me from Bogota, Colombia. But I'm not here to speak on them more specifically though, about the Kogi, which are also an indigenous tribe from Bogota, Colombia. And they have made two movies, and one of their spiritual leader's sons had gone on a live webcast and spoke about the consequences of giving in to the death machine of the capitalistic hellscape that is putting things up like big data centers and the constant need to grow as an economy which is killing the planet. It's dying, literally dying because of people like whoever is working to build these three The movies are called The Heart of the World, Message from the Heart of the World, and Aluna. And they're both on YouTube, as is the spiritual leader's son that came and talked. You can just YouTube search Golden Message of the Kogi. And everyone's already mentioned the environmental impact of energy use, noise, impacts of wildlife, energy grid strain, air pollution, e-waste, water usage, heated water discharge, danger of fires and explosions. But there are real consequences to this, what I've already said. That's all I really have to say.
It took you to look at those videos. Did they say this is more older?
Jean Dixon.
My name is Jean Dixon. I'm reading a message from Virginia Maier, M A I E R, from Fairport, New York. I'm going to add a couple of things of my own. I am writing to oppose the proposed financial incentives for Project Potentia. Although I'm not a resident of Genesee County, the decisions you make on this project will affect me and my children and my grandchildren throughout, through the pollution and energy use of this data center. Scientists have been telling us for decades that our emissions of fossil fuel are fundamentally changing the climate that supports human civilization. At this point, with limited renewable energy available, any activities that seek to use immense amounts of energy such as this data center will be contributing to this planetary crisis. By allowing this project to go forward and even facilitating it, you are telling the children of this community that you don't care that they will have to deal with this crisis. The effects of which we can see from the devastating fires in Los Angeles to the deadly flooding caused by Hurricane Helene, to the newly unpredictable weather patterns wreaking havoc on agriculture in your own community. These effects are only going to keep getting worse unless we unite to stop emitting fossil fuels. It is even more galling that this pollution will be created by a data center which is literally not producing anything of value except wealth for a few already wealthy individuals. Either for Bitcoin mining or powering completely unnecessary A I bots. It's incredibly depressing that this project is receiving greater consideration than the literal future of the planet and of the people you and I care about. The majority of residents in New York State voted for a constitutional amendment guaranteeing a right to clean air and water just two years ago. This project flies in the face of what the people have said they want and our responsibilities to future generations. Please reject any support for this project and rethink whether that, what is happening at stamp really aligns with the public's desires and what I hope is your desire to make the world a better place now and in the future. Thank you.
Cindy Stroud.
Good afternoon. I enjoy the way everybody walks up here real slow to make y'all wait. So I walk real slow for y'all. Just want you to know, I'm from Clean Air Coalition of Western New York, and I'm here just to let you know I oppose the proposed incentive for Project Potentia. Is that how you pronounce it? Okay, Potentia. And development of the Project Potentia by G C E D C. Any financial incentive for Project Any financial incentive for Project Double Read would thus violate the stipulations of the general municipal law. Project Double Read uses use, use of 250 megawatts of energy per year and consumption of 60,000 gallons of diesel fuel per year, with associated emissions of 533 tons of CO2 per year, as well as its squandering of 10,000 gallons of water daily, clearly violates the state's renewable energy goals and emission reduction targets. We say no.
Chris Murawski?
Hi, everyone. My name is Chris Murawski, M-U-R-A-W-S-K-I. First name is C-H-R-I-S. Coming today with my colleague Cindy, Executive Director of the Clean Air Coalition of Western New York, and we work with residents and workers of environmental justice communities throughout our region to organize and win for public health and environmental justice. We're also part of a group, Buffalo Nekanessa, Friends of Ekohewe, provide solidarity from non-native groups to native groups in New York, in Western New York. On behalf of Clean Air's members and supporters, we write to express comments about the proposed financial incentives being offered by GCEDC to the three proposed projects and the stamp project, Project Double Read, Project Rampart, and Project Potentia. We strongly oppose these proposed financial incentives for these three projects and any further development of these projects. And we've arrived at opposition for the following reasons. Data centers are immensely energy-intensive facilities, significant demands on local infrastructure for relatively small job creation. Regulations must be put in place first to prevent stress on energy and water infrastructure, as well as to prevent concerns from noise pollution. Before we permit these, these structures to go in place, we need regulations to regulate them, and we do not have them yet in New York. Clean Air has a campaign in North Tonawanda, New York, where there is a data center currently running on an old gas-fired power plant. But there's well-documented effects from noise pollution from the residents. The residents can't sleep. They're disturbing the wildlife. They're disturbing their pets. And so we know that this is a big concern. And the city has actually passed a two-year moratorium on the development of any more of these, these type of projects because it's so bad. So stamp is an extremely inappropriate site for a data center due to its remote location, lack of infrastructure, and of course adjacency to the Seneca-Tonawanda Nation and sensitive, sensitive protected environmental areas. Further, all three of these proposals include plans for emergency diesel backup generators and greenhouse gas emissions projected into the megatons annually. We also object to the opaque public engagement process related to the development of the site and these three proposed projects. And we ask that GCEDC reject the applications of the three projects, also produce the written cost-benefit analysis as stipulated in the general municipal law, and then widely circulate this report and hold another round of public hearings with significant advance notice to the public and not a time that's during the business day, nine to five. Give folks a chance to come in the evening. We put together all kinds of public engagement groups, and we always do them in the evening because we want people to come and take part in that. We don't do it during the workday. And there's other, other things in here that I don't have time to get to, but I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I think we'll close the public hearing for Project Rampart. Stop the video, and then we'll do, do you have new sign-in sheets?